Good evening. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is May 27, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your head for a short invocation. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. May wisdom guide our decisions, fairness shape our discussions, and compassion lead our actions. Grant us the courage to face challenges, the patience to seek solutions, and the vision to build a brighter future. May this meeting reflect our commitment to collaboration, respect, and service. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operators, Mike Zuproni and Evan Russell. Thank you both for your assistance. We will now turn to Mrs. Fisher for a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll approve those, Mayor. I have reviewed the council meeting and workshop minutes from May 13, 2025. I find them in order, therefore I move for approval.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We have an appointment tonight to the Board of Community Relations, Sarah Kaplan, for a term ending 12/31/27. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Please approve with the... Raise your hand. Or call the roll. Raise your...
You do like sign vote.
Sign vote.
Okay. Go ahead and do roll then. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Fantastic addition to the BCR, yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. Congratulations, Sarah. You're not here this evening, are you?
I don't know.
No, I didn't think so. Okay, but I'm sure she's watching and is looking forward to working with the board.
She's not watching, she's texting.
We have a special presentation tonight for Asian American and Pacific Islander lantern and mobile contest winners, and I believe Mr. Sudditt is going to be doing that.
There are a few of the winners here tonight, I just want to recognize them. If you could please stand up. Is that you, Carter, in the back? This is... So both students and... Hold on, let me get my notes here. I'm the sub. Let me just be honest here. Gwen Owens, the president of BCR, the leader, is... This is her job, and I'm doing my best to beat Gwen tonight. Hold on, my notes.
Come on, get organized.
No, I'm ready. Are you Xavier?
Yes.
Yeah. I thought I knew what I was talking about here. So both of these students are from Greenmont Elementary and participated in our AAPI Lantern and Mobile Contest, and we celebrated last week at Rosewood, some great food, and got to see their work. And most of our participants were from Greenmont Elementary, and we also awarded that classroom at Greenmont a pizza party, and we got notes back saying it was great. Was that good? You guys both got pizza?
Yeah.
All right. That's awesome.
He enjoyed himself.
I'm not charging him. Next slide. Steve?
Steve's got the slides, there you go.
There we go. Keep going. Jane Porter was our winner, by the way. She is from Orchard Park. These are some of the displays. That's Jane's in the middle. Carter, which one of these is yours? Can you see? Top left, right?
Uh, it's the top right.
Top right is Carter. Xavier, do you see yours on this slide?
Um... Yeah.
Which one's yours?
Bottom left.
Oh, bottom left. Awesome. Great work.
We should also recognize Mrs. Kelly, who is here still teaching, even in her off-hours.
So thank you for leading the charge from Greenmont and these elementary students for all these creations they did to celebrate festivals of light through mobiles and through the lanterns, and they're still on display at Rosewood. So if you haven't had a chance to see them yet, you can still see them. So congratulations to Carter and to Xavier.
I'd like to make a special shout out to Greenmont, by the way, for the second time this year. Martin Luther King event, they just were... Knocked it out of the ballpark, and they did it again for this event. We had other schools participating, and we're so happy to have their involvement, but Greenmont is just making a name for themselves as an art school or something. I don't know. So... You finished?
I'm done.
Okay, great.
Congratulations, Carter. Congratulations, Xavier. Thanks for being here tonight, guys.
You can sit down. Okay. We also have a special presentation tonight from Bill Cheerhart, Head of Parks and Rec, on America's 250 Ohio Community.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I've actually enlisted the help of Mr. John Brannick to help me this morning, this evening. You may recall earlier discussions regarding America celebrating its semi-quinsentennial. In 2026, America will be 250 years old, and Ohio is celebrating all the ways that we have contributed to United States history for 250 years. Each month has a different theme that reflects Ohio's unique impact. On March 11, you passed a resolution requesting the city of Kettering to become an official America 250 Ohio Community by the Ohio Commission for the U.S. Semi-Quinsentennial, also referred to as America 250 Ohio. I'm happy to share that the city did receive this designation, which I will present to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Along with the flag Mr. Brannick will help display, that we should display with pride on city property.
Cool. Very nice.
I'm also joined by Ms. Shayna McConville, our Division Manager of Cultural Arts. She is leading an active committee to plan activities and events to celebrate America's 250th birthday, as she's peeking over there, taking pictures. Some of the themes for 2026 includes Ohio's first and originals, and I think we can all agree that Marion's should be in that list. Ohio entertains, Ohio creates arts, culture, and literature. One of my favorites, Ohio outdoors, as well as Ohio gathers and Ohio plays. So we look forward to celebrating America's 250th birthday, or, as I like to call it, the semi-quinsentennial, next year with all of us in the city of Kettering. So thank you very much.
Maybe we should have everyone in the audience say that word altogether.
I think we could.
Can you lead it?
I think we could. Can anybody call say together?
Yeah.
All right. Ready on the...
Xavier's ready.
So I'm gonna say it one more time. It is the semi-quinsentennial. Ready? Semi-quinsentennial. Good job.
Hey. And Xavier, I could hear you above all. Okay, we have one more special presentation tonight, and another surprise coming from Shayna McConville. Shayna, are you aware you have a spot on the agenda?
I'm the manager of Michael Rediger.
Okay.
We're all on a team in this. I'm Michael Rediger. I am a Kettering resident, and I am a member... I'm the chair of the committee, and I'm also the director and president of the Dayton Art Institute, and one of the reasons...
We don't mess around.
What's that?
We don't mess around with the chair of the...
One of the reasons that I moved to Kettering was because of the commitment to art and public spaces. It was important to me as I was looking at where I was gonna live. So, we have a presentation tonight, and we... We live and work in a world... We've shaped ourselves from roads we drive on to buildings we live and work in, and yet in our busy lives, we rush to gather, to get things... Rush to get things done. We often overlook the roles that design and beauty in these spaces, what happens when we start to think more intentionally about shared spaces and experiences. Oops, my page got out of order. We imagine our environment as welcoming, safe, vibrant, family-friendly, responsive, and forward-thinking. While these qualities can be expressed in many ways, visual enhancements like public art often make the strongest and most immediate impression. In this example that you're looking at, bikers are admiring the Friendship Arch, a steel sculpture by local artist Tess Little, which integrates hundreds of handprints from residents who live in the Winsler Park neighborhood where this artwork is located. Twenty-five years ago, the elected officials of Kettering along with citizens created a percent-for-art program. The purpose of this program was to provide opportunities for all people to have access to a beautiful environment, as well as tell the Kettering story. When Lincoln Civic Park... Lincoln Park Civic Commons was created shortly after the park opened, the city commissioned its first artwork, song and dance by Barry Gunderson. This whimsical sculpture invites interaction, drawing people with a playful and abstract forms, and was chosen by community members. Now, twenty-five years later, Art in Public Places Program continues to commission and acquire artworks that reflect Kettering's unique identity. As of today, there are nearly thirty works that enhance and enrich our parks, roadways, public buildings, including this one by Aaron McIntyre, commissioned with the government center renovation in 2009 and '10. You all probably recognize it from above you. So now, I'm going to introduce my colleague, Darden Bradshaw, for her next part of the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Darden Bradshaw. I teach at UD. I'm a Kettering resident, and I am a member of the Art in Public Places Committee, and I'd like to share our guiding principles with you. They include to acquire and commission art that reflects the highest of aesthetic standards and ethics, to promote the value of public art as a civic resource, to enhance the city's identity through art that reflects the diverse life experiences of Kettering residents. Within that mission, we also include to integrate art into architecture, landscape, and the urban fabric from the earliest stages of infrastructure planning, to engage the community through accessible educational programs that connect the arts with quality of life, including economic well-being, and to ensure the proper display, handling, and maintenance of the collection. Storytelling is a piece of what we do through these artworks, and we aspire to experience daily moments of reflection, joy, and pride in our public spaces and community. Our very own Kettering Arts Council is reflected here. They are a city council-appointed committee, and they created a virtual tour featuring their favorite artworks around Kettering. You can find out more about these stories on our website, www/playkettering.org. Through the stories, but also through meaningful engagement, art has a lasting impact. In 2019, we unveiled Be Ambitious in the Haber-Stick neighborhood of Kettering, a place without a green space or a park. The sidewalk mosaics offered a permanent and visually stunning series of games for children to play outside. Almost 400 community members helped create mosaic sidewalk games, led by artist Jess McMillan, herself a former elementary school student from the neighborhood. The past several years have been tough, and as cities have confronted stress, isolation, and environmental challenges, more and more people are turning to public art as a solution that can offer calm, connection, and healing. These pieces go beyond decoration. They are tools for emotional and physical restoration. Last month, we added one such piece to our collection, building on our city's love of man's best friend. The piece we added is by Sunjin Lim. It's called Silver Lining in Good Company, also known colloquially as Cloud Person and Dog. It is our newest piece of public art, and it's located at the Rosewood Art Center. Just across the road at Lincoln Park, if you are so inclined, you can also hang out with the old man and sit and chat with his dog. I'm gonna turn the floor back over to him.
Thank you.
John Van Alstine's 9/11 Memorial, located in Lincoln Park, is an example of an event that we would rather not remember. It is a tribute to those who lost... Who were lost on that day. It serves as a continued thank you to those who responded the call for help, and it provides a useful tool to impart a history lesson. Once again, collaboration was the key to the successful project as it was with Oak Park Sculpture Scene here. In 2018, residents of the neighborhood provided input of the... And feedback of what would be critical to creating the design of this artwork. Understanding the history of the neighborhood, introducing the Tenneco plant, provided great inspiration for the artist Virginia Kissler. All across the country, public art demonstrates a city's commitment to making public spaces more livable, more impactful, and more memorable. The majority of the commissioned public art is funded through cities and counties with additional support from nonprofits and private partnerships. For twenty-five years, Kettering has witnessed how this civic investment and community involvement fosters pride and belonging. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce my colleague, Linda Lombard.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening. It's been twenty years ago since I stood here and represented this committee, so I might be a little rusty, but I'll give it my best shot. We do know that the arts make a significant economic impact on the regional economy. In 2023, arts generated more than $239 million in activity in our five-county region. A survey among local and regional employers revealed that cities that support the arts tend to attract better recruits, better talent. It is a huge part of wanting to work and live in a good city. And yes, art can be heavy lifting and very brave art in dollars. Public artworks become beloved destinations for people of all ages, families, and everybody. This one, The Egg by Beth Holyoke and Kathy Seidel, lives in Kennedy Park, and it features, as you can see, hundreds of ceramic tiles made by just as many residents who live in the area. It is so beloved that our biggest problem is people keep prying off tiles to keep as mementos for themselves. But, you know, that's the way it is sometimes. The Ridgeway Road Bridge is really a perfect example of the partnership between the city of Kettering, our public arts committee, and the artist. What could have just been another bridge instead became a working piece of public art and a favorite for walkers, runners, and, if you haven't tried it, sunset watchers. As the city plans for its future, we're excited to know that public art will be an integral part of Kettering's plans for infrastructure projects, including the Kettering dream of creating a downtown. Beyond roadways, curbs, and traffic boxes, visual tools are infinite in helping solve any built environment challenge. Now, there's a group. As the first chairperson of this committee, it's been my honor and pleasure to watch the program grow and flourish. Kudos to past and present city leadership for supporting this important community asset, an investment that clearly says our community matters. Public art gives us tools to share our stories, spark imagination and creativity, and envision a better future for us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda, and you weren't rusty at all, I can assure you. I want to really thank the committee and all of the people that contribute so much to the arts in Kettering. I don't think we talk about it enough. I think it's... Hearing this presentation, we need to do this on a regular basis. So, got that? Yes, he looks up at me. Not...
He's writing.
He's writing. Okay. But thank you. Thank you so much, and we appreciate all of you coming here tonight and contributing to this report. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will now move on to public comments on legislation. If there is anyone who would like to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda, they may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the agenda on tonight's... The legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for you to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak before council on the legislation on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we will move along then to the ordinances in second reading, which we have none. We'll move to resolutions, and Mrs. Fisher, would you like to begin?
Yes, ma'am. I do have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Cargill for the purchase of approximately 5,500 tons of road salt for our '25-'26 winter season. It is estimated cost of $405,130, but our budget is $180,000. It is requested by the Public Service Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergstetter, do you have some additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. It seems a little silly to be talking about road salt when we're not even out of the spring yet, but it is that time of year where we enter the contracts for the upcoming snow season. This year, the contract will be with Cargill. It will be... The price per ton for the upcoming season per ton of salt is $73.66. This bid is approximately 15% higher than last year's pricing due to the cold winter we had last year, so... Or this past year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow the city of Kettering to serve as responsible lead agency for administration of the South Dixie Highway resurfacing project. Dorothy Lane to the Dayton Corporation line limit. City project number 02-114K, ODOT project MOT-South Dixie-RSF-Kettering-PID-123948. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstetter.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of the projects that we applied for last year to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. We were successful in getting funding awarded for this project. It would essentially repave South Dixie Highway from Dorothy Lane up to the Dayton Corporation line in the far northwest part of Kettering. We were awarded a grant of approximately $942,000. Unfortunately, this project is not until state fiscal year 2030, so it's a few years out, but we have already requested the project to be moved up to an earlier fiscal year if funds allowed... Are allowed. We'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the merger plan of the Miami Valley Communications Council. This is being requested by the city manager's office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution will approve the proposed merger of the Miami Valley Communications Council, what we call MBCC, with the Miami Valley Educational Computer Association, MAVECA. The city of Kettering is a member... Not only a member, a founding member of MBCC, which is a council of governments. Each of the member cities must pass legislation approving the merger of MBCC with MAVECA to create a new council of governments that will be known as the Miami Valley Technology and Communications Group. I know you heard a detailed presentation from Mr. Weisskirk, your executive director of MBCC recently in workshop, and had the opportunity to review a detailed proposal regarding this merger, but I thought I'd provide a little additional context. This idea emerged out of a long strategic planning process that MBCC undertook. One of the issues that it wrestled with was the reality of declining cable franchise fees in the modern era, and cable franchise fees are the source of revenue that we allocate towards MBCC to provide the vital services that they provide to each of the member communities. Out of that strategic plan, it was recommended that merger be considered in order to sustain the services over time to its members. MAVECA was already an established partner with MBCC. It provides extensive technological services to school districts, and merger discussions were both natural, given the existing partnership and productive. The merger opens more services to the city of Kettering, ones that MAVECA provides to school districts. It also creates the ability for us to sustain the services that MBCC has historically provided to us. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have and recommend approval of this proposal.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a 2025 community safety grant from CenterPoint Energy. This is requested by the fire department. I do move for approval.
Second. Mr. Grayson?
Yes. Your Honor, members of council, the Kettering Fire Department would like to apply for a community safety grant in association with CenterPoint Energy. The maximum award would be $2,500. No matching funds are required, and I believe that if we're successful, the funds will be used to purchase new thermal imaging cameras. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for an Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works grant.
Mr. Bergstreser?
Thank you, your honor. The city would like to apply for a ODNR Nature Works Grant that would be used to upgrade and renovate the playground equipment and surfacing at Indian River Park at our playground for all. The grant requires a 25% match, which we will be utilizing current year budgeted funds. If funds are awarded for this project, we would anticipate construction starting late this year or early next year. Be happy to answer questions.
Anyone have any question? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025. This is requested by the Finance Department, and the estimated cost is $502,500, and I move for its approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, your honor. There are two different supplemental appropriation buckets here. First is for economic development facade and demolition grants. Supplemental appropriation is requested of $500,000 to increase the economic development budget for those grants from the current level this year of $150,000 to $650,000. The city's funding will come from amounts that has been previously committed by the city council for economic development purposes. Essentially, we have sufficient funds and economic development funding. We just need this supplemental appropriation to allocate them specifically to facade and demolition grants. We recently increased the eligible amount. We also made the decision to make those funds available citywide, and we've seen a significant interest in their use, and we think it's beneficial to the community to allocate these additional funds for improving commercial facades and demolishing blighted structures. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have. The second, sorry, not yet. The second piece is the Board of Community Relations has attracted sponsorship of its, of the Juneteenth celebration activities from the Kawhi Family Foundation, the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, the McDonald Owner and Operator Group of Great Ohio, and the Greater Dayton Realist Association. Collectively, those groups would sponsor in the amount of $2,500. We need to appropriate those funds for their, for use. Now, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, I'd just like to comment, the growth of Juneteenth since we first started that four years ago is really fascinating to see. We've got that kind of sponsorship coming in now.
We have a diligent Board of Community Relations that really works really, very hard on it.
Great, thank you. Can we go ahead and call the roll?
Yep. Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Okay, yes. Okay. We have no ordinances in first reading tonight. Do we have any certifications and petitions? Mrs. Haslam?
Your honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to return now to our manager's report for a community update. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, your honor. We want to once again highlight the clinic dates that are available. We're getting to the end of this quarter, and, but there are still available dates this week and throughout June for our, our spring blood pressure clinic dates. Those are in partnership with the Dayton Metro Library Kettering Marine Branch on Far Hills, and we certainly encourage anybody that thinks they may need to get their blood pressure checked to do so. Kettering is a tight-knit community, and we actually want to foster more of that. We, we, we believe block parties are a terrific way that you can get acquainted with your neighbors, build a sense of community, and celebrate holidays like, like the one we had this past weekend. If people are interested in a block party, they can download information from our website or call our Engineering Department at the number on the screen. We are also accepting applications for the class of 2025 and 2026 of the Kettering Leadership Academy, which I'm sure is going to be the best class ever. People usually object to that, having graduated from KLA. If, if you don't know, Kettering Leadership Academy is a great opportunity to learn about the city of Kettering, and as one recent graduate said, to learn to fall in love with your city. I liked that statement. Applications are going to be accepted through June 3, and we encourage you, if you're interested, to apply. We also are always eager to promote pride in the neighborhood and your property. We have Neighborhood of Pride Awards. If you would like to nominate a neighbor, a business, yourself, or any Kettering resident you think is deserving of the Neighborhood Pride Award, nominations can be done online or by emailing our volunteer administrator, Lindsay Curry, at the email on the screen. A submission form is also included in the summer edition of Contact with Kettering. The nominations are due August 1. Block Party is coming. This is a wonderful event that we encourage people to participate in and interact with city departments and city services, enjoy some free entertainment on the phrase stage, and meet your friends and neighbors in Lincoln Park and found out why Kettering is called home. That is June 4, 2025, 6 to 8 p.m., and no, there will probably not be deli bars left at 8 p.m., so get there early.
That's right.
Couple other events I want to highlight. Saturday, June 7, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. in the Lathrum Senior Center and Adventure Reef parking lots. We will transform those into an outdoor market for vendors. Food trucks and entertainment will be featured, and we also have this event in conjunction with Touch a Truck with lots of fun for the younger crowd. It includes balloon twisting, face painting, and more. So, a festive event. Our Summer Flea Market and Touch a Truck at our own Lathrum Center and Adventure Reef Water Park. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson.
Prepare for a busy summer.
Always a lot of fun.
Yep.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. At this point, if there's anyone who'd like to speak to city council on any issues whatsoever, may come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council?
I think it looks like Xavier wants to say something.
Xavier wants, Xavier, would you like to come to the podium? I was serious. Don't hold him back.
Let him come up.
Come on down. Come on down.
Come on, Xavier.
Oh, my gosh, he doesn't know who to listen to.
He's suddenly getting shy after sitting here making
Parents and grandparents.
Google eyes of Mrs. Fisher all evening. Isaiah, you are welcome to come anytime, and, and next time, I expect you at the podium. Okay?
There you go. There you go.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before council tonight? Okay, thank you all for coming. We appreciate having an audience. It's kind of nice, so. We will turn now to city council reports, and I will call on Mrs. Fisher to start.
I'll start off with, we have lots of ambassadors in Stier, Austria. Our kids have arrived, and I, I got a picture of them yesterday, so that's good news as they learn our sister cities and staying there, and it's, it's, it's good.
How many students are there?
I think there was only about nine.
Nine?
Nine kids, nine kids that went. If you're looking for something to do on Wednesday at 4 o'clock, I'll be helping cycle Kettering, take down the American flags in our Beavertown Cemetery. They, they proudly put all the flags up, which made it very nice on Memorial Day, and now it's time to take them back down. And last but certainly not least, I'd like to thank staff, present and past, as well as some of our council folks that did attend the Celebration of Life for a Bonnie Piddle, one of our dear friends from the city.
It's beautiful.
Since our last meeting, I have had a couple of my committee meetings. So, on May 15, the Sustainability Committee got together, and we, they have done a lot of good work with reducing waste and helping make some of our, our city events a little greener, and we're making some efforts now to reach out to some other big city events that aren't city-run. So, things that happen in Kettering, and it's kind of early talks, so hopefully I'll have more definitive news at a future meeting, but it's been good talks early. Some of these events, like I'll shout out Italian Fest, they got their own green team, and this ran with it on their own. So, just reduce waste, help sort and recycle at, at the Italian Fest. So, it's great to see that stuff happening, and the Sustainability Committee, they've been doing a lot of good work with that. I also, we had our meeting for MVCC, which I'm a city, one of the liaisons up here, and Mr. Grayson already mentioned the merger, and we voted on the merger tonight, but I think it's going to be a really good thing for just the region. It's going to be good for both MAVECA and MVCC, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Grayson. He helped lead that on the strategic plan side. You guys kind of arrived with that, so a lot of people helped make that happen, but that'll be a really good thing, I think. And then lastly, I teach at Fairmont High School, and this, we just wrapped up another great school year, and Thursday was graduation, which is always bittersweet, watching our seniors send them off into the world, you know, having the opportunity to watch them kind of grow over four years and mature, and it's exciting to see what they'll do next, but it's always a bittersweet event. And then Friday, the day after that, is teacher's last day, which is also a bittersweet event. We kind of reflect and celebrate the school year always. We have some traditions that are a lot of fun, and then we let our retirees speak. And this year, we had three retirees who are kind of titans of Kettering City Schools. Judy Costa, who's a home ec teacher for a long time and ran the yearbook for many years, which is a tough job. Rich Wright, who's a beloved orchestra teacher, inspired many kids to love music in Kettering and be creative. And Steve Hippenmeyer, who is a legendary coach and teacher, chemistry teacher, and Fairmont East graduate back in the day, so he's been around a while. So, just losing those people, there were a lot of tears, a lot of hugs, and I just feel very fortunate to work at a place where, when we go on summer break, it's exciting. Don't get me wrong, I'm excited, but people are sad to leave. I mean, we're hugging each other and saying, "I love you," and, you know, it's, it's, it's an emotional event every year, especially this year with the retirees. So, I feel very fortunate to teach in Kettering and send my kids to Kettering City Schools, where there's just so many great teachers who love what they do. And then lastly, I also am an adjunct instructor at the Modern, so I'm lucky to do that as well, and they have their graduation coming up next weekend, but they have, and we were actually invited, but I was going to invite everybody, their Reveal Event, which is at the Modern, the School of Advertising Arts by Skate World. You guys have driven by it, I'm sure, if you didn't know what it was already. And Reveal is an exhibition that highlights the creative achievements of the college's graduating class, and the Modern invites creative professionals, hiring managers, and community leaders to tour the campus. It is a beautiful campus, if you haven't been in there, and meet the graduates and explore the wide range of student work. So, I would encourage anybody to go, anybody up here to go. It's a neat event every year, so. I was a little long-winded, but that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and congratulations on another school year.
I don't have anything except I want to say congratulations to the teachers and students who finished their school year, and happy summer.
Thanks.
Great work.
Mr. Scott?
I had the privilege and honor yesterday to again attend the Memorial Day Ceremony at Beaver Creek Cemetery, put on by Kettering's American Legion Hall. It's a sobering event. They read the names of, of past heroes, and it, it makes you stop and think. And I did a little research today. One of my passions is, is military history, and as it stands right now, according to my research, there are less than 100,000 World War II veterans still alive. Korea, obviously, the, most of those folks are in their 80s and 90s, and the more sobering thing was, some of the veterans of First Gulf War are approaching social security age. Okay? So, these people deserve our respect and thanks. Traditionally, Memorial Day was always on May 30. I remember as a kid, it was called Decoration Day. So, if you happen to encounter a veteran or a family who had a veteran who gave the ultimate in the line of duty, thank them for their service and, and their sacrifice. For Decoration Day this Friday, May 30.
Thank you.
First of all, as far as Greenmont goes, they have absolutely made a name for themselves. You guys continue to be the best school in the city. Love Greenmont. Also, Carter and Xavier, I took a picture of you guys, and I texted it to Mrs. Sauerbrower. She said that she's very proud of you guys, and she's sorry she wasn't here tonight to clap for you, so congratulations from Mrs. Sauerbrower. Also, I want to congratulate Steve Bergstreser and Jennifer Baker in the council, city council office, city manager's office, for organizing an incredible Youth and Government Day. Oh, that was such a wonderful day with kids here, and they had their mock council meeting. Oh, it's the best. I just continually impressed by those kids. I think twice at least Jill and I were talking about how impressive these children are, and Jill, I think you said they have it so much more together than we would have at that age, which is incredibly true. Blows my mind. And last but not least, I want to thank council and the city's support for the MVCC merger with MAVECA. This is a wonderful move for the organization, and it ensures that they can continue to do this quiet work that they do that supports all these cities, and it's, it's a wonderful organization, so. Also, since there's an audience, the Kettering Leadership Academy is amazing. Look it up on their, on the city's website. See if you're interested and shoot in an application. It's wonderful. You'll love it. Okay, I'm done.
A lot is happening. I will also just second the sentiments about the Student and Government Day that Mr. Byers puts on. Mr. Byer, almost two weeks ago here in the city building, the students that represented Fairmont were just, they're better dressed than we were and the staff. I don't know how we missed the memo on that. These students showed up in suits. It was casual Friday here at the city building for the rest of us. And, but also that morning, I was privileged to speak to about 100 elementary students at Kettering's other fantastic elementary school, Southdale, for Career Day, representing council, and walked first through fifth graders through the process of being an elected council member, and we did mock meetings and elected mayors of Southdale for the day, and proposed legislation to extend recess by, by eight minutes every day. So, it was a very successful day with those students at Career Day. There's been a lot of talk about Board of Community Relations, that I'm the liaison to that board. You know, the mission of the board is to promote and encourage the creation and maintenance of an inclusive community here in Kettering for all of our residents, and they do that with these programs year-round, and just this observation this month of Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, that these students, both Carter and Xavier, created art through their school, Greenmont, is just one more of those programs that just brings attention to all members of our community. And the next big event is Juneteenth, which we talked about here on June 19, and that event has grown, and it's now drawing resources and participants from other municipalities in our area, and it's sure to be a day, a community event that really just celebrates the unique history behind June 19. So, add that to your calendar, and BCR is busy plugging away on that next event. And tonight, we also added our last open vacancy spot to Sarah Kaplan, and that fills our committee right now for the first time in a while. All, all seats on BCR are filled at this single moment in time. So, it never happens, but right now, they're all full. So, that's my report from BCR and Student Government and Career Day, so off to you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sudditt. I guess that leaves me. You've heard a lot about some of the great events that took place in Kettering over the last couple of weeks, and I was very honored to be asked to participate in a larger community event, and that was the NATO Parliamentary Assembly that took place in downtown Dayton. It was a really unusual situation. Dayton is rarely the